Good evening, everyone. Could I ask everyone to please take their seats? If everyone could please take their seats, we're going to go ahead and get started. All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 17th Board of Education meeting. We have all trustees present. I'm going to ask everyone to please rise with me, and we will recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, good evening and welcome. Tonight, our first item of business, typically we have recognition, but by law, we need to have a public hearing on our '25-'26 proposed budget. So Mr. Trudell will take us through some slides to share the budget, and then this will be an opportunity if there's anyone in the audience who has questions on the budget. And then after that, we will move into recognizing our many exceptional students tonight.
All right, thank you, and good evening, Board of Education, and the community members that showed up tonight for this wonderful presentation. So I'm going to go through here just briefly. By law, we are required to have a public hearing on the budget, which is our truth in taxation. This is an opportunity for us to talk about the millage rates that are going to be levied upon our citizens within Troy, and then those figures then are tied into the budget that we did review at the last workshop. So as we go through here, just briefly looking at our taxable values, you can see here, these are the taxable values that the county does publish for us. They provide us the L-4028 document every spring, typically in April. These documents then are what determine the millage rates essentially as we calculate them. So you can see in the orange here, that's the total taxable value. There's about a, just under 5% increase for the year, going from $5.3 billion to $5.6 billion across the city. And then we do break that out between the blue and the green bars there. That's your homestead in blue and non-homestead in green. So the homestead, those are your typical homeowner residences, primary residences, and then the green bar, that's all of your commercial businesses and secondary rental properties, things like that. So these are the various taxes that you'll see. So the state education tax, that's the first one. That one is not something we levy, that is something that is state mandated. So all of the municipalities, they levy those six mils on all of the homes and properties throughout the district. So all properties pay that six mils. That goes back to the state in the form of a foundation allowance that then gets redistributed across all of the school districts. The operating millage, so this is 18 mils. That one is levied on non-homestead properties by the school district, so this covers some of our operating expenditures. We are required by law to levy that 18 mils in order to receive the full foundation allowance. So this is typically about 20% or so of our total foundation that we are required to collect locally. If you do not do that as a district, then you're falling short of what your foundation should be. Hold harmless, this is on the homestead properties. This is essentially a millage rate based on enrollment, taxable values, and foundation allowance. So you'll notice over time, that rate has come down a little bit each year, and that's as our enrollment steadily comes down little by little each year. That's going to affect that total amount that we can levy. So you'll notice in the comparison on the next slides here that that one did go down a little bit. But this one is levied annually on the homestead properties across the district. And then the sinking fund and debt fund, that one is levied on all properties throughout the district for sinking fund expenditures and debt service expenditures. So these are the millage rates proposed in our budget. That'll be on the consent agenda for your approvals this evening. So general operating, so we have our commercial personal property at 8.5796 mils. The homestead property, that one is six mils less than that, so 2.5796 mils. And then all other non-homestead is the 18 mils that were required to levy as well. Sinking fund, all properties, that's .954, so slightly less than last year, just given the rollbacks that we have to calculate as part of that. And then the debt fund, again, at 6.1 mils. That one is not required to be rolled back. So briefly, the millage rollback, that's essentially a rate that we are given by the county every year. So we have to look at last year's rate, roll it back a little bit by a percentage that's determined by the county, and then from there, that'll roll back the rate, so that way the increase in taxes on a citizen is not more than 5% every year, or lesser than 5% are the rate of inflation. So that's something that we have to calculate every year as part of this process to ensure that we're in compliance with the state law. So this is just a brief overview of the homestead millage comparison. So you can see there on the far right, we have our blue is the state education tax at six mils, the green is our hold harmless, the debt is the orange, and then the red is the sinking fund. So again, each one just a little bit less than the prior year, with the exception of the debt and the state education tax. And that's primarily related to the headly rollback. And then on the non-homestead side, so this is again all of your secondary properties, your businesses throughout the district, or the city, I should say. And so for the state education tax, six mils, that's required on all properties, the 18 mils there in the green, and then the debt and sinking fund are the same as your homestead. So in total, this is kind of a rough comparison from year to year. So you can see from last year on homestead, we went from 15.79 down to 15.6336. And then likewise, on the non-homestead side, that one went down a little bit, from 31.0606 to 31.054. And all of that gets rolled into here. So this is the L-4029, this is the document that we get Board approved. We'll have you guys sign that right after your approval of the budgets, and then the establishment of these rates, and then this is sent to the county and all the municipalities, and then those are put onto the July 1st tax bills that are then sent out. So we have to list all of our operating millages, hold harmless, sinking fund, all the debt funds, and then this shows the calculation of the reduction of the headly rollback as And then I'll just briefly touch on the general fund amendment here. So not many changes from the last workshop. Again, we go through, we try to do last-minute catching of P-card purchases and things like that that are slowly coming in over the last week. So we do have a proposed amendment here of 3.794 million use of fund balance for this year. I think it was around 3.5 previously, so a little bit higher there, but again, conservatively, that's where we are anticipating to be. And then looking at next year, proposed use of fund balance of 3.7 million. I just want to caution though that this is based on a very conservative budget. We still, we have three wildly different proposals from the government, state government. So right now, we're taking the conservative approach with this. We, as a district, have gone through and worked diligently as a team to make sure that we do make strategic reductions across the district through attrition. That way, we're not impacting the classrooms, setting ourselves up for success going into the next school year. So as we get into the fall, right after the school year, as soon as the state releases the budget, we'll be able to plug those numbers into our projection models and then take a look at these figures and do a quick amendment, hopefully by November, December, if not sooner. That way, we can continue to plan accordingly. And then on the rest of these funds, there were no changes from the board workshop. The only change that I did make was we had some transfers coming from some of our ancillary funds that we were moving into the general fund. I just had to make sure I put those in the ancillary funds, just to present those transfers coming out of those funds and then into the general fund, but that was the only other change that was made. Any questions from the board?
No.
We can open up for public comment at this time?
Is there any member of the audience that would like to make a comment or ask a question on the budget or any of the material that Mr. Trudell went through? Go ahead, come on up.
The sinking fund? So the sinking fund is the .954 mils, and that is essentially a tax that we levy to collect funds for capital projects. So things across the district like HVAC units, building mounted pavements, pavement, roofing, things that are not operational in nature. So it can't pay for salaries, it can't pay for supply of materials, it has to be something that is more permanently fixed to the builder's side.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Trudell.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to recognition, which is why many of you are here tonight. I have the pleasure of being able to introduce the first item of recognition tonight. As a former Girl Scout myself and as a former board chair of the Girl Scouts of Southeastern Michigan, it gives me great pleasure tonight to recognize 2025 Athens graduate Ava Brunau for earning the prestigious Girl Scouts of the USA Gold Award Scholarship. This is a distinguished honor, and it's awarded to just one Gold Award Girl Scout per council, and it represents the highest achievement in Girl Scouting. So Ava, we are so proud of you, and I know how, just what an honor this is for you. Gold Award Girl Scouts are leaders, they're changemakers, they're role models, who take action to create meaningful, lasting impact. Ava exemplifies the spirit through her award-winning project on the spot, Community First Aid Awareness for Outdoor Recreation. So she has really made, her project is making a difference in our community. So at this time, we would like to invite Ava to the podium to share more about her inspiring work and the difference that it's making in our Troy community. So Ava, thank you.
My name is Ava Brunau. I'm a senior who graduated from Athens, and I'm honored to share the journey behind my Girl Scout Gold Award project, On the Spot. Many components of this project have been organized as a binder filled with timelines, community contacts, supply lists, and outreach goals. From the start, I was driven by one mission, to make first aid resources and education more accessible in everyday outdoor spaces, places like parks, trails, and playgrounds where minor injuries are common but visitors are often unprepared. As an initial part of my project, I collected data by placing surveys in public areas, such as the Troy Public Library, to better understand community needs and evaluate the impact of this project. This is one example of the surveys I put out. It was just a flyer hung up, the QR code. What ended up happening was I created and distributed outdoor-friendly first aid kits stocked with essential supplies for handling things like scrapes and cuts. To strengthen the impact, I gave presentations at elementary, middle, and high schools, walking students through the basics of preparedness and involving them in assembling these boo-boo kits for their own communities to also build an understanding of basic first aid supplies. These kits now live in several local locations, including Larson Middle School, Hill Elementary, and several schools in Detroit. But the reach of this project grew far beyond what I initially imagined. Today, on-the-spot first aid kits have made it to Canada, Singapore, Italy, and soon to the Manuel Garza Elementary School in the Philippines, where I will be delivering the kits in person on August 10. That growth would not have been possible without powerful collaboration. I'm grateful to have worked with the FTC 22911 GirlBots Robotics Team out of Larson Middle School, the PCCM and KKPM Filipino Youth Groups, the Troy Public Library Bookmobile, the Troy Nature Center and Tri-Historic Village, several teachers in Detroit who helped bring this initiative into their classrooms, and many other individuals, such as Isabella DeLaCruz, who's a physician assistant. I shared this project with local Girl Scout, as I shared this project with local Girl Scout groups, I also distributed first aid patches to the scouts who attended my presentations. It was a small way to recognize their curiosity, engagement, and commitment to helping others. This work has been deeply meaningful to me, and I'm incredibly honored that I was recognized through a National Girl Scout Scholarship. But more than any award, it's the impact and the people I met along the way that have stayed with me the most. This project reminded me that leadership means listening, collaborating, and showing up with compassion. Even something as simple as a bandage can be the beginning of hope and needed help when it's needed most. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you to everyone who made On the Spot possible.
Any questions from any board members for Ava? Go ahead, Vitell.
Ava, nicely done. Quick question. Quick question, do you like fundraise for all these activities? I'm sure it costs a lot of money, right?
Yeah, so part of the Girl Scout Gold Award process is we had to submit like a proposal showing how we'd like make everything, how we fund everything, because they don't want it to entirely be from like the Girl Scouts' own pockets. So part of the way I funded it was through another project that I do. I also created and lead the project Macarons for Mores, where I sell macarons and fundraise to donate allergy-friendly food supplies to the Food Pantry Sound, the TCT. So I rerouted some of those funds from that fundraiser to initially help with this project. But I also did pop can fundraisers with many of the groups and people that I worked with to help bring in more money for this project. But I don't know, I think it might have been with the other stuff. But I also had pamphlets that I gave alongside the kits. I place these pamphlets in the schools and the parks, and the pamphlets ran through like basic first aid situations. Savers printing helped donate those pamphlets by like funding a part of it. So partially through fundraising efforts, partially through like generous community donations, is how the supplies and the project came to be.
Nice, nicely done. Thank you.
Other question? Go ahead, Stephanie.
Congratulations, Ava. We're really proud of you. So tell us what comes next for you now that you've reached this great success.
In terms of the project, part of like the Girl Scout Gold Award is that it has to be sustainable. So through the partnership with the robotics team and the Filipino youth organizations and the Troy Nature Center, Troy Historic Center, Troy Public Library Bookmobile, those organizations will help, some will help with continuing the production of the kits, so more so the organizations like the GirlBots Robotics Team and the Filipino groups. And then the organizations like the Tri-Historic Village will help with the distribution of the kits. Notably, the Tri-Historic Village will have the kits available at their Troy Traffic Jam event, where they get a lot of visitors annually. So that will help broaden the kit's usage and the kit's helpfulness, whereas like the other organizations will help distribute the kits at the school level and distributing the kits to the parks. I'm still going to help out as I can, but especially as I'm stepping into going to college, I will just be working with these groups to help continue making this project sustainable. Thank you.
Great. Great. That was my question about sustainability, because I know that that's a requirement. So it's great to see that you have really done collaboration and have a number of different organizations that will continue the great work that you're doing. So if you want to step up here, we have a certificate for you.
Flip your board. Yes.
Our second mission moment this evening is to honor, or we are honored to present us this second mission moment, one that celebrates an outstanding academic achievement. We are thrilled to recognize the Bemis Math Pentathlon Team who have earned the highest distinction in the nation, the 2025 National Math Pentathlon First Place Gold Trophy. Congratulations. This is an extraordinary accomplishment that reflects both the dedication of our students and the support of their entire school community. At this time, please join me in welcoming Bemis Principal, Mrs. Harleen Singh, to the podium to share more about this remarkable achievement and present the championship team.
It is my great honor to introduce and celebrate a group of students whose hard work, teamwork, and determination have earned them a national recognition. In an exceptional demonstration of critical thinking, sportsmanship, and academic excellence, Bemis Elementary has been awarded the 2025 National Math Pentathlon First Place Gold Trophy, the highest honor in the math pentathlon program across the entire country. This award is not just about math, it's about resilience, strategy, collaboration, and the spirit of learning. Competing against thousands of students nationwide, our Bemis students rose to the top by performing at the highest levels across all three divisions. What's even more remarkable is that this team achieved the highest cumulative team score recorded in the last 24 years of this competition from the entire state of Michigan. Of course, this success would not have been possible without our dedicated and passionate team behind the scenes. At the heart of it is our Math Pentathlon Program Coordinator, Mr. Ligio Timana, whose vision and commitment laid the foundation for this success. Alongside him are tireless and outstanding volunteer coaches who worked every week to support the team. Each of these leaders displayed patience and encouragement to our students every step of the way. And now, please join me in congratulating the heart of this program, our incredible Bemis students. Bemis Bears, your commitment, integrity, and excellence have made all of us proud. You are not only champions of math, you are champions of character, effort, and community. Congratulations, Bemis Bears, we are so proud of you. And at this time, if you can come forward so we can honor you and take pictures to celebrate this incredible honor.
So if we could have our students come on up to the front?
They've got them.
Yeah, they've got all their... So Ms. Montanti may be around... Got everybody? Maybe they can get her. to celebrate with them at a very, very nice banquet. Mrs. Zentler was there, Ms. Anie was there. I had a chance to be there.
Who was there?
Kendra.
Kendra, yeah. Ms. Montanti was there. We had a chance. So thank you so much for that invite, and congratulations again for your hard work. It certainly paid off as national champions. Next under recognition is our student spotlight, the last student spotlight of the year. This evening, we recognize the creative achievements of students in the TSD Creative Guild. Although tonight, it may be more accurate to call it our alumni spotlight, we're excited to recognize some recent graduates for their outstanding dedication in the Creative Guild throughout their entire high school career. I'm going to invite Mr. Butcher to the podium to introduce our honorees this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Macheski, and good evening, Board of Education. No, it's not Groundhog's Day. You do recognize these two, because for the first time ever, they are both repeat student spotlights. This is not without reason. Tonight, I'm here to celebrate all of the work that these two have done throughout all four years of high school in the Creative Guild. In fact, Anush was my second-ever student spotlight when she was only a freshman, and I said then that I hoped to bring her back one day when she's a senior, because I knew there would be a lot more work to show you. Akshaya was spotlighted in her sophomore year, where she showed you her first short film. It was on that project where Anush and Akshaya first collaborated, and they've been friends ever since. So what has happened since the last time they stood here? Obviously, they've remained dedicated employees, but I'm especially proud of how each of them have continued pursuing their creativity, even though their pathways look so different. Anush is always filming, and has even found work outside of the Creative Guild. In fact, she's so talented, I hired her just a few months ago to film my sister's wedding video. It's no surprise that in her senior year, she won the Natus Student Production Award You see Akshaya all the time as she helps us record these monthly board meetings. What you don't see as often is her ability to write, produce, direct, and edit her very own short films. Last year, she won a Natus Student Production Award in film editing, and this year, she completed the trifecta by winning both writing and directing. This year, they've collaborated again by hosting our legacy show, The Dream Job Podcast, and continue to work on it even after graduation day. We have a highlight reel to show you just how much they've done through personal projects and for our community, and I'm going to try to maintain my composure for one last moment before we play it. Anush and Akshaya have always been there. I have watched them learn and grow for four years, and now, as they leave, there will be no one left in the Creative Guild who was there when it started. But it's okay, because the Creative Guild is what it is because of them, and their passion and success will continue to ripple, inspiring student creativity here in the Troy School District for years to come. So thank you to this board for everything you've done to help maintain and keep Creative Guild going for what it is. And of course, it would not be possible without wonderful students like yourselves. Love you two so much. So before we open to any potential comments or questions, I'll let you say a few words.
I just wanted to say, like, thank you for, like, the resources that Creative Guild has, like, provided me to find, like, a community to, like, express my own creativity and, like, find my own way with art. Thank you.
To add on to what she just said, it is very important to have a creative outlet for students to express themselves. And the Creative Guild has been there for me every single year as a constant, and you can see my improvement just in those short clips, and has helped us win national and state-level awards. So thank you so much. This is very important for creativity.[655.68][655.68][applause]
Questions? Questions from the board?
I guess I can ask. Yeah. Go first.
So I know you're very passionate. Looks like you've worked on for four years. How do you encourage younger students to be part of the Creative Guild?
I would just say, like, don't be intimidated to start, like, figuring stuff out because, like, film work and, like, camera work and just art in general is very intimidating, I think, to start off with. But I feel like even if you're inexperienced, it's really easy to, like, start finding out what you're good at and what you can do with filming in general.
Similarly to what she just said, it's very important to just do it. Don't be afraid to make mistakes. And the more you do it, the better you get at it, and the more you fall in love with your work, and the more you get recognized for it. It's not all about awards. It's about expressing yourself and just doing it physically, sitting down. Everyone has a phone. Everyone can make a short film or a statement.
So you guys both clearly worked on a lot of projects, but do you have one that stands
I would say, like, last summer, I was working on my second short film. And I think with that one, I had a lot... Like, I had a lot of options for creativity. And I worked with Anush on that film as well. And I think that had... That left a really big impact on me because I found a lot of different ways to take a camera and use it to make different effects and different reactions to give the audience a certain feeling.
At first, before I started the Creative Guild, I thought I wanted to be in front of the camera. But after many years of using a camera, falling in love with it, I realized that my passion is cinematography itself. So this year especially, for the Natus Award, I made a collage of all of my best work into one video. And finally, after many years of work in progress, it gave me the recognition that I, you know, I feel like I deserve to... For my work. But definitely, this year, cinematography real for me.
Great, great. So what's next for both of you?
So filming in specific, I'm planning on minoring it. Minoring in film in college, in, like, university in the fall. I'm hoping to continue at least taking photos because I know I will get busier, but I'm hoping to continue taking photos and videos throughout.
Great.
Like, the rest of my life.
Good.
I'm planning to study Communications and Media at U of M, and hopefully, that gives me more of a foundation for my love for film. And I will continue to pursue it as not only a hobby, but hopefully as a job later on in the future. As Mr. Butcher said, I filmed his sister's wedding, and I have a couple gigs coming up. So I'm just excited to continue to do what I love to do, and hopefully, other people will fall in love with it as well.
Great. Okay. Do you want me to do this one? Okay, we have one other item under recognition tonight, which will be very quick. And this is, in light of some of the things that have happened in our community, the board felt strongly that it would be appropriate for us to pass a resolution in support of gun safety and safe gun storage. So may I have a resolution, please? Ms. Zentler?
I'll just read it, right? Yeah. First time. Whereas this Troy School District Board of Education Resolution in Support of Gun Safety and Safe Gun Storage. Whereas the safety and wellbeing of our students, teachers, and staff is a top priority in the Troy School District. Whereas firearm-related deaths is the leading cause of death among children and adolescents. Whereas rates of death from firearms among ages 14 to 17 are now 22.5% higher than motor-vehicle related death rates. In the U.S., middle and high school-aged children are now more likely to die as the result of a firearm injury than from any other single cause of death. Whereas, according to a report from the U.S. Secret Service, in incidents of gun violence on school grounds, 76% of attackers acquired a firearm from the home of a parent or other close relative. Whereas every year, roughly 350 children under the age of 18 unintentionally shoot themselves or someone else. Whereas, nearly 22,000 Americans die by firearm suicide every year, including over 950 children and teens. Whereas, research indicates that 47% of firearm owners who have children living in their homes do not safely store at least one of their weapons. Whereas, evidence strongly suggests that secure firearm storage is an essential component to any effective strategy to keep our community safe. Whereas, keeping students, teachers, and staff safe from the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders within our school district. Whereas, in order to continue with preventative measures to increase student and school safety, we must act now. Now therefore, be it resolved that the board directs the superintendent to periodically communicate the importance of safe firearm storage and other firearm safety and violence prevention measures during Gun Violence Awareness Month, and to disseminate material on an annual basis stressing the importance of secure storage of firearms by including this in our annual notification materials. Be it further resolved that the board and superintendent will continue to work with local law enforcement agencies, medical and mental health agencies, and nonprofit organizations to collaborate and increase efforts to inform district parents of their obligations regarding secure storage of firearms in their homes, as well as other gun violence prevention safety measures. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall not be construed to conflict with any existing Michigan or federal law.
Support. We have a resolution by Ms. Zentler, supported by Ms. Anay. Any discussion or comment on this resolution? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Opposed, say no. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, that concludes our recognition tonight. We are going to take a brief five-minute break. So if there are anybody who is interested in not staying for the remainder of the meeting, you can feel free to go. But we will resume the rest of our meeting in about five minutes. And again, congratulations to our wonderful students. Have a good summer. You certainly have worked very, very hard, and we're very proud of you all.[1186.41][1186.41][laughter] Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you, everyone. So Dr. Macheski, any additions and deletions tonight?
There are none this evening.
Okay, next would be public communication on agenda items. Are there any?
They seem to all be non-agenda.
Okay, so we will do public communication on non-agenda items after... At the... Towards the latter part of the meeting. So next item of business is our General Consent Agenda. And the General Consent Agenda tonight consists of minutes of the May 6, 2025 Board of Education Workshop, minutes of the May 20, 2025 Board of Education Meeting, the April 20, 2025 Treasurers Report, renewal of our food service contract, renewal of our membership in the Michigan High School Athletic Association, the 2024-25 Budget Amendment, the 2025-26 Budget Appropriations Resolution, the District Pavement Crack Fill and Striping Contract, the Troy Preschool Playground Pavilion Purchase and Installation Contract, Schools of Choice Amendment for 2025-26, and renewal of our First Student Contract for Bussing. May I have a resolution, please? Mr. Hop.
Be it therefore resolved that the Troy Board of Education takes action to approve Items A through K on the Consent Agenda.
Support. We have a resolution by Mr. Hop, supported by Ms. Alish. Is there any discussion on any of this? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the Consent Agenda, please say yes. Yes. Opposed, say no. Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is Personnel, and I will ask Mr. Pagel to come up.
Good evening, Dr. Macheski, Dr. Philip Art, members of the board. While it may be a little quieter around the Troy School District this week, we still have a buzz of energy in the Employee Services Department as we continue through our hiring season. And to that end, I have some administrative appointments for your consideration this evening. First of which is for the position of Assistant Principal at Baker Middle School. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Ms. Caitlin Ebert to the position of Assistant Principal at Baker Middle School. Ms. Ebert started her career in 2011, teaching American history and English at Powell Middle School in the Romeo School District. The past seven years, Ms. Ebert has served as Middle School Assistant Principal at Romeo Middle School. She has fostered meaningful relationships with students, staff, and families while consistently pursuing the broader mission and vision of the school community. Ms. Ebert has a bachelor's degree in secondary education from Central Michigan University and a master's degree in school principalship from Central Michigan University. With your approval, Ms. Ebert will begin her duties as Assistant Principal at Baker Middle School commencing with the 2025-26 school year.
Okay, thank you. We are being asked to pass a resolution for the appointment of our new Assistant Principal at Baker Middle School. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education issues a two-year administrative contract without tenure in the administrative position to Ms. Ebert, who will begin her duties as Assistant Principal at Baker Middle School commencing with the 2025-26 school year.
We have a resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Mr. Hop. Any comment or discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Opposed, say no. Motion carries, and welcome...
Thank you for this opportunity. There are very few reasons why I would leave my current school district, but the one big reason is Troy School District. I think that that's evident tonight, just seeing the students that were represented, whether it was the Math Contathlon students, Girl Scout representatives. That Guild video was absolutely amazing. The opportunities that Troy School District allows for our students in our community, my own children included, is the reason why I wanted to come here. And I am very grateful for this opportunity to serve the staff and students at Baker. So thank you very much.
Next up for your consideration is an administrative appointment for the Director of Teaching and Learning. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Dr. David Recker to the position of Director of Teaching and Learning. Dr. Recker started his career in education following graduation from college in 2012. He began his education career teaching language arts and journalism in Dayton, Ohio, at the Dayton Early College Academy. Dr. Recker then moved to the Troy area in 2014 and took a language arts position at Troy High School. Dr. Recker accepted the role as Assistant Principal at Larson Middle School in 2017, and then accepted the role as Principal at Hamilton Elementary in 2020. During his career, Dr. Recker has supported teachers, navigated complex student issues, as well as cultivated responsive literacy practices. Dr. Recker has a bachelor's degree in adolescent to young adult education from the University of Dayton and a master of arts in education administration from Michigan State University. He earned his education doctorate degree in organizational leadership from Oakland University in 2021. With your approval, Dr. Recker will begin his duties as Director of Teaching and Learning commencing with the 2025-26 school year.
Thank you. We're being asked to consider approving an administrative appointment for our new Director of Teaching and Learning. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Anay?
Be therefore resolved that the Board of Education issues a two-year administrative contract without tenure in the administrative position to Dr. David Recker, who will begin his duties as Director, teaching and learning commencing with 2025-26 school year.
Support. We have a resolution by Ms. Anay, supported by Ms. Potts. Any discussion or comment on this resolution? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Opposed, say no.
I just wanted to give a quick thank you all. Thank you to you all for this opportunity and to my selfless wife for always sacrificing me in interview prep. It is very bittersweet to leave something so good at Hamilton Elementary School, truly. But I am excited to get to get back to all levels from previously being a secondary teacher, a secondary administrator, an elementary administrator. It'll be fun to get back to serving the district at a full scale. Thank you all.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you.[1645.11][1645.11][applause] Dr. Recker, do you want to introduce your family? We understand you have some travelers here tonight.
I have my mom and dad here from Columbus, Ohio.[1664.11][1664.11][applause] My son Dominic, who's now a third grader.[1675.72][1675.72][applause] My daughter, Caroline, who's a kindergarten learner.[1681.61][1681.61][applause] And a wild card, Miss Nubie.[1687.11][1687.11][laughter] And, uh, you have two school hours this year.
Way yay.
And finally, for your consideration this evening, we have an administrative appointment for the Principal at Hamilton Elementary School. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Ms. Reba McNally to the position of Principal at Hamilton Elementary School. Ms. McNally began her teaching career at Hoover Elementary School in Hazel Park in 2016. In 2018, she moved to Hamilton Elementary. Ms. McNally served as the Troy School District Summer School Coordinator in 2023. Ms. McNally is currently the Elementary Principal at Greenwood Elementary in Lakeview Public Schools since 2024. During her career, she has ensured a safe, inclusive, and engaging environment for staff and students. Ms. McNally has a bachelor's degree in early childhood and K-8 elementary education from Western Michigan University, and a master's degree in K-12 educational leadership and administration from Eastern Michigan University. With your approval, Ms. McNally will begin her duties as Principal at Hamilton Elementary School commencing with the 2025-26 school year.
Okay, thank you. We're being asked to approve administrative appointment for our new Principal of Hamilton Elementary School. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Education issues a two-year administrative contract without tenure in the administrative position to Mrs. Reba McNally, who will begin her duties as Principal, Hamilton Elementary School commencing with the 2025-26 school year.
Support. We have a resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Ms. Anay. Any discussion on this resolution? Okay, hearing none. All those in... Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. Okay, congratulations.
Hello. Thank you so much for welcoming me back here to the Troy School District and for this opportunity. There were also not many things that would have caused me to leave my principalship this year. I've had a great year, learned a lot about myself as a leader, but hearing that, you know, David was moving on and Hamilton, my home, that, you know, trained me and helped me become the teacher and leader that I am, I felt called to come back and had just deep responsibility. So, I'm so excited to come back and work alongside, you know, these amazing individuals that are the staff that make up the school, and then so many of our students that I've had, and their families, and I'm just really excited to serve them and rejoin them as a team.
Great. Well, congratulations. Okay, thank you. And again, congratulations to our three new administrators. Well, two new Troy administrators. I don't want to call you a recycled one. You're moving up. Yeah, moving up. So, we're very excited and looking forward to working with all three of you. Our next item is on curriculum. Dr. Macheski?
Yes. We have one item under curriculum this evening. It's consideration for Elementary Writing Units of Study. Director of Teaching and Learning, along with members of the Teaching and Learning Team, provided information to board members on the recommended materials for grades K-5 for the upcoming school year. Board members had an opportunity to review the plan, ask questions, following a board workshop in both May and June, as well as follow-up questions with administration. At this time, it would be appropriate for the Board of Education to consider a resolution for adoption of the above-mentioned materials.
Okay. We're being asked to consider a resolution for the Elementary Writing Units of Study approval. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Potts?
Be it therefore resolved that the above-mentioned recommended materials for grades K-5 be approved starting in the 2025-26 school year.
Support.
We have a resolution by Ms. Potts, supported by Ms. Alish. Any comments or discussion on this? Yes, Ms. Zentler?
Thanks. I just want an opportunity to first praise the work of the district. When I came to Troy as an administrator in 2011, the reading and writing curriculum framework was much like the Wild West. Everyone was sort of doing everything and anything they wanted to instruct. Since that time, there has been great work toward coherence around the method and appropriate instructional framework. As an administrator, that was an amazing place to be, and I'm proud of the work that every single teacher in the elementary sector of the district has done. Now, as a board member, however, I have to look at this work from a different frame. Policy is a focal point of my work now. To that end, my highest priority is ensuring that every student receives evidence-based instruction that is proven to improve writing and reading outcomes. While I appreciate the intent behind the proposed purchase of the writing curriculum, I must respectfully vote no on this adoption. The reason is simple. Our district must begin to align all literacy instruction with the science of reading, an approach grounded in decades of cognitive research in how children learn to read and write. The science of reading emphasizes systematic and explicit instruction. It has a strong, well-documented track record of improving reading and writing proficiency for all students, including particularly those who struggle the most. In contrast, the curriculum you're asking us to approve, while popular in some circles, has been widely criticized for lacking a strong evidence base and for not adequately addressing important foundational reading and writing skills. Recent revisions to the program have attempted to incorporate some of these things, but these changes still fall short of what is required for a comprehensive, researched-aligned literacy framework that works for all of our students, in particular, our most-at-risk learners. Adopting a curriculum that does not fully reflect this work would be a step backward. At a time when we need to accelerate learning recovery and close achievement gaps, I believe we owe our students a reading and writing program that reflects the best of what we know from science, and I believe our teachers are already poised to do so. I will continue to advocate for instructional materials that are proven to work for all of our learners. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Milton, Dr. Milton?
Thank you. At the workshop, I, if, for those of you that were there, you recall, I had questions about or concerns about parental involvement and the timing, also involvement of all our teaching staff, and I also had a lot of questions just about the curriculum itself, and I really appreciate that our Teaching and Learning Department took time out of their day to meet with me and show me materials, answer a lot of questions, and I really did learn a lot that I didn't know before, and that's, as a board member, that's one of my things that I keep trying to do, is learn as much as I can so that I can make good decisions. I had questions around data, and although the type of data that I had hoped for wasn't something that we had at that moment, I was able to see classroom-level data that had been collected around particularly spelling, and I saw some positive results in that direction. So, I left with another question. When we were talking about this curriculum, it was proposed as kind of like, we do revised units of study, and the reason that the others were rejected was because they weren't rich, they weren't student-driven, and it was framed as kind of teaching out of a workbook, which 100% I don't agree with. You know, the writing that was talked about is motivating for students, and so I left thinking, why would districts do a workshop or a workbook-based writing curriculum? And so, that left other questions in my mind, so I did reach out to some other districts and talk to some assistant superintendents about their transition. I particularly picked districts that had used units of study and had transitioned away from units of study to ask them about what they liked, what they didn't like, how the transition went, and I posed that question. You know, in my district, we're looking at this, and then the other things were kind of like learning to write from a workbook. Is that what you're doing? And none of them said that that was the case, which made me even more confused, because then I wondered, well, why would we pick one curriculum that has these positive features and then put it up against four others that are so, so simple? And I think we lost out on an opportunity to maybe do a deeper dive into other curriculum, and that was disappointing to me. So, I just wanted to let you know that I had done a little bit more thinking beyond that and just had some concerns about the process that we went through.
Ms. Anay?
Yes, okay. So, this vote on the writing curriculum is not an easy decision for me. No curriculum ever is perfect or complete, and philosophically, I kind of find the idea of separating reading and writing curricula somewhat counterintuitive. Additionally, we know that we have state-mandated changes for the reading curriculum that are expected in the next two to three years. So, my initial instinct is to delay this adoption and save the money. However, after deep, in-depth conversations with many of the teachers and hearing from them, I've decided to support this curriculum. First of all, this is not a brand-new curriculum, and this is the same writing curriculum that our district has been using for almost a decade, with incremental improvements such as spelling and grammar and other essential components. It does not require significant additional professional development, and a vast majority of our teachers support it to adopt it. So, and even those that I've spoken to who don't fully endorse it, kind of oppose it because of the timing concerns and the fact that there's going to be changes to the reading curriculum. Now, I hear and respect their perspectives. I understand them. Ultimately, I believe that this incremental improvement will benefit at least two to three years of our students by strengthening their writing skills, and it is worth this investment. We can always reassess our reading curriculum, along with our, reassess our writing along with our reading, and make adjustments as needed when we move forward.
Any other comments? Okay, we ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the writing curriculum, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no.
No.
So, that's five yeses and two noes. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, that's all for curriculum tonight. Our next item is, we have one item of business. Mr. Trudell?
So, this item on the agenda for your consideration relates to the Epic system. So, you may recall back in February, the board did approve for the Epic paging system to be installed at the remaining 10 elementary schools. This, in particular, item on the agenda tonight is a change order, and to explain this the best way I can, so, the Old Smith Middle School right now has a paging system that is pretty dated, doesn't function very well, but we're not installing anything in that building yet. We're going to install a new Epic system in the new building. Knowing that we have three more years of use in that building, and ultimately wanting to use that building as kind of a training ground, we have worked with Bart Mello to put together this change order, so it would utilize the pricing from the previous approval, but it would essentially just authorize us to go ahead and install a system, hopefully in September, pending your approval, in that Old Smith Building. Typical useful life is four to five years on the equipment, so we figured if we can get three good years out of that system, use it to train the existing Smith Building staff and students, that'll aid in their transition to the new building. Baker's also in the works right now, hopefully next summer, to get their system installed, and then this would leave Bowlin and Larson without anything until their renovations in '27 and '28 school year. So, we felt like this would be a good opportunity if we did install it, hopefully in September, by the end of September, get it installed, let the new, or the current Smith Building use it, and then as Bowlin and Larson move in and out of that building over the next few years, it would ultimately provide them with the assurance that they're going to have the knowledge on how to use that system when they move back into their newly renovated spaces. So, at the conclusion of the use of that building, then, we would then pull the equipment out and then use those as spare parts in the rest of our building, so it's compatible throughout the rest of the district. So, we felt like, you know, in the name of security and equity, we wanted to make sure that Smith and Bowlin and Larson also have opportunities to utilize this system and learn it for preparation for when they move into their new spaces. So, the total of this change order is $173,978, right in line a little bit more than a traditional elementary school. We're not adjusting the total contingency that previously existed on this project, so that'll remain then to support the 11 buildings, should there be any modifications needed. But, it was our recommendation to the board that we did approve this. That way, we can get it installed as quickly as we can, hopefully by just after the start of school.
Great. Okay, we are being asked to consider approval of purchase of an Epic system for Smith Middle School. May I have a resolution, please? Ms. Alish?
Be it therefore resolved that the purchase of an Epic system for Smith Middle School be approved through VSC Inc. in the amount of $173,978.0, and that this amount be approved as an expenditure of the Capital Projects Fund. Support.
We have a resolution by Ms. Alish, supported by Ms. Anay. Any discussion on this? Yes, Ms. Alish?
I have a question. Can you just remind us what the Epic system is, and then also just, I guess, confirm we've already installed this in some of the elementary schools and been working with it?
Yep, so the Epic system, so it stands for Education, Paging, and Intercom Communications. So, it's essentially an advanced, more robust version of a PA system. So, staff are going to have the ability to access like a platform of a, primarily the central office staff, they'll be able to access a map of the building. They can page in and out of a classroom. Teachers are going to have a wearable around their neck. If there's an emergency of any kind, they can page the front office, and that then kind of moves around the building with them so that they can have that same type of connectivity between the office and the classroom. I know Rochester Schools had theirs on the news recently. WXYZ ran an article on their type of system. It's the same type of system. They just went with a different brand than we did. I know Royal Oak Schools uses Epic as well, so it's pretty popular in this area. More and more districts are looking to get into that. But, there's customizable notifications, different bell customizations, the displays in the hallways for where the clocks are, that can page messages as well. So, really, it's just a much more advanced system, but it also then can connect into the surrounding, or the perimeter doors, so that way you have access to see like which doors are propped open and which ones need to be closed, setting alarms, things like that. So, it's a combination of PA and a security platform all tied into one. And then, as we look further into this bond, we're going to look at our building access controls across the district that would then integrate into this system. So, we're trying to design that piece right now for board approval at a later date, but we're trying to kind of connect all of these systems to function together.
So, we've already installed some of this in the elementary schools?
Yep, Bemis and Leonard Elementary both piloted it for a year, so then the board approved it back in February for the remaining 10 elementary schools, and then Baker's was set this summer, but they needed some electrical work across the whole building in order to make it compatible, which will occur this summer, and then next summer, they would get their system as well.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, we are now ready for public communication on non-agenda items. I think, what do we have, 10? 10 people speaking. So, when I call your name, if you would please come up, watch the clock. You will have three minutes to address the board. If you would just say your name and whether you have children in the district, and then, again, this is your opportunity to address the board. It won't be a conversation, so we will, if there's any follow-up required, we can do that outside of, after the meeting, or at an alternate time. So, our first speaker tonight is Mr. Walt Stores.
President Philip Hart, members of the Troy School Board, Dr. Macheski, Judy. It's a grand night to be here with the students. Wasn't that such a wonderful, wonderful thing? That was neat. I worked on a project for the Army that was headed by General Whalen. In any conference room, you'd have these meetings. When you walked out of the room, there was a plaque on the wall, and it said, "Whenever there's a problem, we have a meeting." And then, everybody leaves the meeting thinking something's been done about the problem. Pretty deep. Anyway, I came before you about a year ago in June with this Sauvignon Glen 3 flooding, and I'm the guy, I left you a picture that looks like the jaws out of a horror movie or something, so, and I'm not going to explain that, but I also gave you a little scenario. You know, we've been working through some failed commitments, and I've done a lot of learning, and it's kind of a goofy problem because it's the Troy School District water flooding the back of 5707 Martel Drives. That ought to be the responsibility of the City of Troy, but they're not too sure what their responsi... Anyway, I think we got the right people talking to the right people now. We got Kurt Bozendies and Mike, I think is his name, over at the Department of Public Works, talking with Rob Carson and Dan and Dr. Macheski. So, I think we're on a good path. So, my purpose coming here tonight is to ask you if they need any support from you all, from the board. Would you please give it to them? This is, it's a peanut problem, you know, in the scope of the district, in the scope of the city, but it's critical to 5707 Martel and the citizens of Sauvignon Glen Number 3. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Stores. Our next speaker is Dr. Judy Armstrong. Oh, Armstrong Hall.
Hello, Dr. Macheski. He's the only one I know, because he sat in my classroom. I'm a retired science teacher from the Troy School District, and my name is Judy Gale. I go by Gale Armstrong Hall.
Okay.
And I don't have an EDD. I have a PhD, and what that means is that it's a theoretical degree, and I study in depth how the environment affects students' brains. I spend many hours in the medical library at Wayne State University looking into this. And so what I have, that's why I want you to listen to me. Sometimes when people just say, doctor, you don't know what kind of doctors we have. There are only three ways to put information into the human brain. First one is silent reading, which doesn't work for most students. Maybe you'll get thirty percent of the group. And I can't tell you how many times I've heard my colleagues and myself say, go home and read this over and then we'll have a test on. Wow, that doesn't work for most students. The second way is the, I only have three minutes here, Doc. That's not good.
It's okay.
I know the third way, can't remember the second one. The third way is by writing. If you write something down, that will go right into your memory. Oh, the second way is oral. You read out loud. How often do we ask children to read out loud anymore? We don't ever ask them to read out loud. So those are the three ways to get, and why do we want to get information into the brain? So that they can pass the test. That's what it's all, the bottom line is, these teachers want their students to pass the test and they want all kinds of students to pass the test, not just one group. And so I'm going to stop talking right there. Is that my three minutes?
Thank you.
And you're very smart to go slowly with the writing. The writing business, I'm telling you, oh, I should mention this. I belong to this group of physicists. It's a regional group. And they were complaining that no students were writing. They just weren't writing. And that's because they're just not taking notes. Well, there's lots of reasons why they're not taking notes. I'm just about ready to go to the National Education Association in front of ten thousand people. I might get up there and I'm going to talk about how we can get more information into our students' brains by writing a little faster. That's my time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. William McFarlane.
Hello. It's been about two weeks since I last addressed the board. And I had some concerns related to transportation regarding the combined musical of Les Mis next spring in twenty-twenty-six. Now, it's been about two weeks since that happened. And so far, there has been no announcement regarding anything. Not even a single word has come out of the Troy School District. Will there be gas money? Will there be fares? Nothing. And really, from my heart, I'm speaking from my heart right now, I feel like this, it doesn't really prove that the Troy School District is world-class, especially when you're supposed to be properly accommodating and, of course, listening to the concerned students, alumni, and parents especially in the audience. I remember two weeks ago, there were over thirty parents that spoke. And I don't want you guys to turn a blind eye and a blind ear to their concerns because they made very valid points that, in my and in the opinions of many other people here, had concerns that were especially relevant. And it's been around two weeks. And all I'm asking for is transparency and accountability from the district and from the board regarding this. Because it's in a year from now, the spring show, not even a year, but again, you have to prepare for this. Because if we're not properly prepared for the combined show, it is not going to help the students here, their parents. It's not going to help anyone. And the way I see it, the way many other people see it, you've got to prepare. Again, I don't want any ill thought to be put into this. I have nothing against anyone here, but as far as I'm concerned, I would at least appreciate it a bit more if you guys could tell us something or anything even related to the issue of transportation next spring at the combined show. Because it's going to be at Troy High and a lot of students here have driven. And I've talked about this two weeks ago. But again, like I said earlier, if you guys could just be more direct and transparent, I would admire that. And that's all I'm asking for, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Walter Cook.
Good evening. My name is Walter Cook and I'm a Troy resident and proud father of a rising first grader at Hamilton Elementary. As a Michigan State University-trained economist of education, I've spent the last decades studying the complex educational landscape here in metro Detroit. I've studied Detroit metro area education for over a decade, first in the nonprofit advocacy space, and then as a staff researcher at Wayne State University's College of Education, now as a director of research at a large urban district in the area. One area that I've studied extensively has been the effect of attendance on educational outcomes. At the board workshop two weeks ago, several public commentators spoke about the post-COVID decline in our third grade E L A M-step scores in the way the E L A curriculum. While I share their concerns about the scores, I respectfully disagree with their diagnosis. The E L A curriculum is the same as it was pre-COVID, so logically, we should look at something that has changed since COVID that explains the decline in M-step. Therefore, I urge the board to instead look for an answer to the M-step beyond the curriculum to a different factor not often discussed at Troy School Board meetings. The rise of chronic absenteeism in Troy following the return from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. For those unfamiliar with the term, chronic absenteeism is defined as a student missing ten percent or more school days for any reason, which is around ten, which is around eighteen days in a full academic year. In the post-pandemic years, Troy's chronic absenteeism has surged to levels that were initially four times higher than before the pandemic. Specifically, the chronic absenteeism rate used to be around five percent before COVID. It surged to nearly nineteen percent in twenty-one, twenty-two and remained elevated at thirteen percent in twenty-three, twenty-four, more than twice than it was pre-COVID. As one might imagine, missing school has been documented as having significant consequences on academic achievement. Specifically, a large body of academic research has shown a direct and causal relationship between attendance and academic achievement. Although my, according to my own research, students who are not chronically absent are nearly five times more likely to be proficient on M-step than those who are chronically absent. My former Wayne State colleagues published a book this year entitled Rethinking Chronic Absenteeism: Why Schools Can't Solve at Home. They explore the successes and failures of Detroit Public Schools' efforts to reduce chronic absenteeism. Even though Troy's context may be different from Detroit's, there are important lessons for local policymakers and I encourage you all to read it. I also have some ideas on ways that the district can leverage their findings and recommendations I will share in a follow-up email. A robust whole-child approach to improving test scores is necessary to address chronic absenteeism. I respectfully ask the board to investigate and invest in solutions to this present problem as I believe it is a significant piece of the puzzle, better understanding and reversing the decline in our students' third grade E L A M-step scores. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mrs. Bella Ray, or Ms. Bella Ray?
Good afternoon, members, or board members. I want to preface with the fact that Athens kids do not want this combined company change. And it's important to mention that we feel we haven't been considered in this whole process and we feel unwanted. Nothing was communicated to us beforehand about the possibility of combining and we never got to give our input. We would have liked to give our opinions before this change was officially made. Not to mention, things will now be more difficult just for a child to do theater in the spring. It has been said that it's about cost of hiring and that it isn't about cost at all. But regardless, if you're going to pay for a bus to take kids there and back, why not just pay a new director? Nothing has to change. Kids don't have to stress about this new program where the other kids will hate them anyway. And it's just easier all around. And not only will A T C get to keep their individuality, but so will T T E for the musical. We are not excited for this change and neither is T T E based on what I have heard from them. So I would like to know who has expressed interest in this joint program. We want our feelings to be heard and considered because theater is supposed to be fun, a time to grow and make new friends. This year, it's scary and uncomfortable. We are working with someone new and kids who don't want us. None of that screams fun to me. So please think about us, because in the end, we're just kids. Kids should not be worried about their company. Kids should not be scared to work with other students. Kids should not be this outraged by a decision, yet here we are fighting for ourselves because no one else will represent us while we go home and cry into our pillows because of the amount of uncertainty revolving around our home, the one place we feel safe to be ourselves. These outgoing, loud, funny kids will suddenly pull into their shells and hide. For most of us, theater is our whole world, our life. Don't ruin our life.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Mrs. Jennifer Lee.
Good evening. I am a parent of a student in the district. I am a resident of the city and I am a teacher here as well. I just want to mention to the two young ladies that were up here for the Creative Guild earlier. One thing that really stood out as I was here was that they said every student needs access to a creative outlet. And I thought, that seems really appropriate. About a month ago, I wrote a letter that I sent to Kendra Montanti and did not have an opportunity or did not take the time to send to the board, but I wanted to share with you while I'm here. And I do want to be said that, you know, I have no doubt that Mr. Mark Vickers is an outstanding director and I feel badly that he has been put in this position of conflict. The letter I sent was as follows, or is as follows. As an alumna of Troy High School, I would like to say I am extremely proud of the work that Troy Theater Ensemble has produced over the years. My siblings and closest friends were part of Oklahoma, Fiddler on the Roof, Grease, and Camelot, to name a few. As a community member, I have seen shows at both Athens and Troy High, Seussical, Mama Mia, Shrek, and Elf. The list goes on and on. However, as an Athens parent, the decision to combine programs is nothing short of a disappointment. My daughter, newly inducted into the thespian troupe, is a proud member of the A T C and has fallen in love over and over again with the theater and its community through the program at Athens. As a teacher, though, the way that this comes across is, simply put, a fast and easy way to save money. Why hire two teachers when one can do the job? Why run two theater programs when one can easily be filled and make it look successful? When I look back at all of the success our theater programs, plural, have had, it saddens me to think that this is the decision that Troy School District has made to try to continue being world-class. A world-class district should be embracing the arts and building them up, not cutting back on them. It saddens me to think that this was the decision made in the name of bettering our district. Sincerely, a disappointed alumna, community member, parent, and teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Olivia Lee.
Good evening. I'm a student at Troy Athens High School. It's disappointing to be back here explaining the same things, just written a different way. But my peers and I are determined to be heard, so here I go. Over and over again, we're being told that the Athens Theater Company will not be dissolved. But what's staying? We're losing our vocal director, our choreographer, our tech dinners, our pre-show traditions, our own director. We're losing the use of our theater for the spring, meaning there will be no student matinees for the high schoolers, so we're using those too. What are we allowed to keep? The actors, the name? What good is a title if there's no story behind it, no legacy? The belief behind us not getting our own director is personal gain. We were told in a student meeting that Mr. Vickers needs the combined talents of both programs in order to put on the best possible performance of Les Mis, but I'm not understanding why he couldn't just co-direct if this is truly about making us one Troy. My peers and I feel as if we're being used. The whole thing feels like an excuse to do a show that one company is not equipped for independently. Please hear us, we want our own director. I, for one, would speak about this at any number of future meetings and I'm sure many others feel the same. Because while theater will still have a place at Athens, the truth of the matter is, the Athens Theater Company will be dissolved without any individuality. The only surefire way to keep more than just the name of A T C is to give us our own director. And let me explain that, let me say that when, that in speaking before you, neither I nor any other students here mean any disrespect towards Mr. Vickers or anyone else involved in T T E. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. James Ray.
Good evening, Dr. Majewski and board members. My name is Jim Ray. I am the parent of a very passionate Athens High School student that you just heard speak a moment ago. Here tonight to express my concerns about the recent decision to consolidate the Troy and Athens after-school theater programs under the direction of Mr. Vickers, the Troy High Theater Director. While I understand the challenge that was created by the retirement of our longtime director and asking the board to help us get the administration to reconsider a solution that places a burden, that places a burden entirely on the Athens students. Under the current plan, our students will have to travel to Troy for rehearsals and performances. And while I'm not going to ask for gas money for that, it does cause problems and make things difficult. It's already been stated, the next show will be combined, as was earlier mentioned, and will be put on at Troy High. This introduces significant transportation challenges and scheduling conflicts, especially for students that participate both in theater and other after-school programs like sports, including my daughter, that'll have that same exact problem. These opportunities coexist today only because everything happens in one building. Beyond the logistics, this decision effectively dissolves the identity of the Troy Athens Theater Company, the A T C, a program with a fifty-year-plus legacy and deep roots in our school community. This legacy was witnessed by all who attended the June third workshop, where at least a half a dozen alumni and former residents of Troy Keen spoke out about their concerns to this board. Combining the programs may seem efficient on paper, but in practice, it's sidelining an entire group of students and it erases a culture that has shaped countless lives, including my own daughter. I respectfully ask that the board encourage Dr. Majewski and the administration to engage with Athens families, students, and staff to find a more equitable solution, one that preserves the distinct voices of both schools and ensures fair access to theater arts education for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mrs. Jody Duda.
Hi, everybody. Dr. Majewski, members of the board. As you consider the adoption of the K through five writing curriculum tonight, I wanted you to have a picture of where these students were headed. I teach English at Troy High School and I wanted to tell you about some of my most proud moments from this year with my sophomores. I was impressed how students reached beyond the text to make their learning personal and relevant. For instance, one of my students who was inspired to research the Assyrian genocide in his AP seminar class after studying Mouse in our English class. He continued to work with the topic in our final argumentative unit, writing an open letter to the Iraqi government about the effects of the past on the present. One of the lenses we used to interrogate Mouse, he wrote, "My family and relatives have repeatedly stated that they do not want to return to Iraq their home, claiming there's nowhere safe to go." In his letter, he argued for land on the Nineveh Plains as an autonomous safe space to reunite families. You might be thinking, well, this is an AP student and this level of work is typical. But I see this engagement in students of all levels. One of my most fragile learners re-engaged this year after returning from an extended absence and feeling quite overwhelmed. He chose to write his argumentative open letter to you, the school board, advocating for a four-day school week to help manage his academic workload and his, and protect his mental health. This student found his voice and it's so clear to me that this kind of choice empowers students. The students I'm talking to about worked with a piloted tenth-grade curriculum. And there's been so much talk about our recent instructional shifts. And as a leader in this work in ninth and tenth grade, I can tell you it's working. I have hundreds of stories about students of all academic levels who are empowered both in and beyond the classroom by this body of work and the instruction that brings it to light. If those who want to bring back honors could see what students are doing in our classroom, they would have more faith that their students are in good hands. To that end, I want to recognize the work teachers have been doing to shift their practice and take on new curriculums. There's been a tremendous amount of learning and growth in our departments and it's not always been easy. The district's support empowering teachers to create our own curriculum has united Troy High and Athens E L A departments. We embody the one Troy spirit. We've attended conferences and professional learning together, which has really strengthened our relationships. So thank you for supporting our work and believing in us. Teachers at both high schools have noticed that our ninth graders are coming to us with rich reading lives. They're increasingly independent and motivated to set reading goals and work towards them. As a parent, I see this as well. When my son, who graduated from Troy High last year when he was a senior, his teacher reserved time in class for independent choice reading and my son read an entire series of graphic novels. So this is what our E L A work is doing for kids.
Thank you. Sorry, time's up. Okay, and our final speaker is Mrs. Carrie Dunneback.
Hello again, thank you for your time. I'm Carrie Dunneback.
one who will be I A senior at Athens this year and is a very proud member of A T C. I'm here to ask the school board to please advise Troy School District Administration to hire Athens High School their own theater director. As this, at the school board meeting, as the school board meeting was coming to surface in the last couple of days, Athens Theater Company students were wondering if the school board really listened to them at the last meeting. At the last meeting, they rallied. They had many students with passionate ideas, and they shared their love for their current theater program. They came together and told you their thoughts and their feelings. Many current parents of those students and other current parents with students who chose not to speak at all shared on behalf of their families. So some of the students really want to know, if you were listening and you heard them, can you now advocate for them? Those students are the community members that will be most impacted by this decision. They spoke up, they let you know how they felt, and they're waiting to see if you can be their advocate. The new model that's being presented to them is taking away their opportunities. There's no other way to see it than that three performances is less than four. Both Troy High and Athens have always run two shows each. The presented model is a decrease in the number of opportunities. It's also evident that these are not equal opportunities. The new model is limiting for Athens Theater Company students. Another concern that student speakers mentioned was that they're sad they won't be able to perform their musical in their home school. Performing a student matinee was brought up by more than one speaker at the last board meeting, because the Athens Theater Company students enjoy sharing their passion with their friends and with their peers. Under the model being presented, this is no longer an opportunity. So again, our Athens Theater kids are asking, will you be their advocate? They want to know, can you please advise Troy School District Administration to hire an Athens Theater Director that belongs only to Athens High School? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public communication. Thank you to our speakers for your comments. We're going to move now into other, and before I turn it over to the other board members, I'm going to use this as an opportunity to share the board's evaluation of our superintendent. The board recently completed Superintendent Dr. Richard Macheski's performance evaluation and would like to share the following assessment with the community. Dr. Macheski is an exemplary superintendent who has met or exceeded expectations in all evaluation categories. He continues to execute to the district's strategic plan and drive high expectations for our vision of learning for all as the basis for instructional decisions. The district remains fiscally strong under his leadership with sufficient fund balance to mitigate disruptions in state funding. A new business operations team was integrated into the organization this year, and bond projects are tracking at or below budget. The district continues to focus on the alignment and implementation of multi-tiered system of supports to address achievement gaps, particularly for special ed, English language learners, and economically disadvantaged students. New assessments have been put in place for secondary students to identify achievement gaps, and high-quality teacher professional development in math and literacy were provided for all grade levels. Several initiatives have been put in place to increase students' sense of belonging, well-being, and security. All staff labor agreements were successfully negotiated and signed this year, providing the district with attractive compensation to retain and recruit staff. Going forward, Dr. Macheski and the board are committed to developing a more robust process that gathers input and engages the community earlier in the curriculum evaluation process, while still relying on the expertise of our educators for decision-making. The board also applauds Rich and the Business Roundtable for the implementation of a growing successful career accelerator program that provided 75 high school students with internship opportunities in local businesses. The district continues to thrive under Dr. Macheski's leadership, and the board has full confidence that he and his team have the capability and capacity to face future challenges. Dr. Macheski's current contract runs through June 30 of 2029, and the board plans to extend this by an additional year. Okay, with that, Ms. Sendler, any comments or other?
That's a tough act to follow. Congratulations, Dr. Macheski, and thank you for leading us well. I'd like to thank all the people who spoke tonight. I want you to know that while you might not see the decision-making that goes into every issue you bring to us, that we work hard together, and it's been a good year of learning for myself as a new board member, and much more to come in that regard. So we do appreciate your feedback and input. Keep it coming, and we want to make sure you know we're listening and we hear you. Last, certainly, a thank you to all of you educators in the room who are hopefully getting ready or already enjoying a wonderful and well-deserved summer. Thanks for your hard work, and rest up, because it's going to get busy again soon.
Great. Ms. Potts?
Hi, everybody. I can finally congratulate all of our T S D graduates tonight, as the last time we were in public, only Athens, Troy High, and I A had graduated, and I was able to attend the T C C H S graduation, and that was also amazing. So I can officially say congratulations to all of our scholars who are graduating. To know that we're sending so many scholars off to higher education, career readiness, and some to serve in the military should make up all of us very proud in the Troy School District as well. To be able to brag about these accomplishments would not be possible without our incredible educators and support staff here at T S D, and I want to honor them as well. Behind every scholar who graduated was an educator who believed in them, pushed them to excel, and challenged them to be an even better version of themselves. With June also comes many celebrations, and not just graduations and dance recitals. Loving Day was on June 12, and for those of you who don't know about Loving Day, it's a day that commemorates when laws that prohibited interracial marriages were struck down in the U.S. and it wasn't passed until 1967, so not that long ago. It's very strange to me to think that anyone who loves someone of a different skin color should be regulated, so thank goodness that isn't illegal anymore, or else my family would not exist. Which brings me to the celebration of Pride Month every June. To our L G B T Q plus community, happy pride. You deserve to be celebrated, acknowledged, respected, and loved. You will always have a place in Troy. It is also Men's Mental Health Awareness Month, so I encourage all men to get their mental health together. On June 19 in 1862, the abolishment of slavery occurred, but it wasn't until 1865 that the last of the people enslaved were freed in the state of Texas. It's a day of freedom. So looking ahead to July and August, I hope everyone has a safe summer and enjoys times with their family. Thank you.
Dr. Mountain?
I would like to, again, congratulate our new administrators. I'm super excited to have them onboard, especially, I'm not singling you out, but I am, David Rucker. I'm so excited, as I was working in the district when he was teaching, became an assistant principal, and it's just really exciting to see one of our own kind of, kind of come up through the ranks and grow and have all these experiences, and I'm really excited to have someone of your knowledge and quality in that position, so congratulations. And I'd also like to say congratulations and a huge thank you to Natalie Hayesabrock. She has served our district well in education, in the classroom. She's made a difference in hundreds of kids' lives, and even more in her role as our K-12 curriculum coordinator. So thank you, Natalie, for all the work that you've done, and best wishes in your work moving forward. And then, you know, as, as we move on with our, our curriculum process, and I sound like a broken squeaky wheel, but Ms. Sunny, I do think you're right in that, that when we see that there's a gap, we need to fill that, and we, we see that there is a gap with some of our work writing, so I'm confident that those gaps are going to be worked on, filled, that our Teaching and Learning Department is, is learning and, and working on data collection in that area, and I hope to see similar sense of urgency when we work with our up-and-coming reading program. Thank you.
Mr. Ha?
I want to acknowledge that I am getting my mental health in order. Also, I just wanted to say, you know, happy summer to everybody, and congratulations to our new administrators, but then also goodbye to Natalie. You've been great over the years, and we're going to definitely miss you. You've been a solid foundation to the administration, so thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, I feel like mine's a little more boring. I attended the June Government Relations Committee meeting for Opie County School Board Association. I know, I believe Dr. Macheski mentioned earlier, or somebody did, that there's a couple of proposed budgets. There was one passed last week by the House that, that unfortunately would direct some of the, would affect direct payments to schools for things like lunch programs, career and technical education, and mental health services. So, you know, hopefully, and in addition, it would divert about, about $170 million to scholarships for students attending private universities, in addition to about $50 million that would be diverted from public schools, K-12 schools. So that is something that is, you know, that is circulating in, in current budgets. In addition to that, some other state-level activities, there is some movement on a cellphone law that seems kind of similar to the direction we're already moving in. There, the Michigan Supreme Court did decline civil suits in the Oxford shooting case, which means that there is, you know, some governmental immunity in cases like that. One of the other things mentioned, there is a ballot initiative that is likely to start this summer to generate funds to fund public schools. It's called the Tax the Wealthy to Fund Schools. Essentially be a couple earning over a million dollars and pay additional state taxes, about four to five percent. Something similar passed in Massachusetts in 2022. If this were to make it to the ballot and pass, it would generate about $1.7 billion a year for public school funding in the state. Additional something related to safety, there is a school bus bill that would close a loophole, which currently allows motorists to legally pass a school bus with flashing yellow lights. So, so those are some of the things that are happening at the state level. And that's, I would say that's, that's it. I would wish everybody a happy and safe summer, and we'll see you back here in two months.
Okay, Ms. Sunny?
I don't have a lot. First of all, I do want to congratulate all our graduates, not only the graduates that graduated from our high schools, which I got the chance to attend, along with many of our board members, also the graduates, as in the teachers, who have retired from our district. I want to thank them for their years of service, and because of you, we had so many wonderful graduates and continue to learn more. I do want to thank Natalie for her service. We're going to miss you. I'm sure Dr. Rucker will continue his service, but we'll definitely miss you for all the work you've done. Summer is here. While the teachers and all need rest up, I do want to continue, remind the students to stay curious, keep learning. Summer learning loss is real. Continue to work.
Great. Dr. Macheski?
Yeah, thank you all for the, for the comments this evening. I do want to just make a couple of references to the budget, and as Ms. Leach mentioned, we, this is going to be a very challenging summer for us in, in public education across Michigan. As of right now, typically, we would be seeing a state budget. We would see what our revenues are going to be. We don't expect to see that until likely well into the summer, if not early fall, unless we're, we're really surprised. With that in mind, to Mr. Trudell's earlier point, we did build our budget on some very conservative numbers for that very reason, and we're hopeful that the, the funding does come, does come in higher than we expect, so that we can continue to do the things across the Troy School District to the community. If, if things do look challenging late summer into early fall, we will reach out and ask you to contact our, your, our legislators and advocate on behalf of, not only the Troy School District, but all students across Michigan. And so, we'll keep an eye on that, and we'll, we'll make sure the community is, is fully aware of what's going on. It should also be noted that, to Mr. Trudell's point, we, we started, we started planning for this budget shortfall last school year, so in the 23, 24 school year, we, through attrition, were able to reduce about 12 F T E this current school year, or, or this, in this current school year. Going into next current, next school year, our budget is based upon a reduction of about 22 to 23 F T E, so almost double. We're doing that through attrition. That was a commitment of this board, through attrition, as well as utilizing fund balance. And while some individuals may be in a bit of different positions, we are, we are maintaining our entire staff moving into, into next year. We'll continue the hard work of looking at our budget moving forward to assure that we remain fiscally stable as a school district. But certainly, the, the funding at the state level is going to have an impact on that. So again, we'll keep you, we'll keep you note, we'll keep you posted on that. I do want to thank our Athens students and parents for coming out this evening. I, I want you to know that we do hear you, and what I would like to do is invite you to come, schedule some time with Ms. De Palado and myself this summer. Maybe we can all get together on a, on a given date or two, come together and have a conversation. We do want to hear what you have, we have heard what you've said. We do want to continue to hear and strategize with you moving forward. It is our goal to create, to provide opportunities for students, not take opportunities away. So we want to work collaboratively with you in that, to that end. And I, too, would like to thank Natalie for her, for her work in the Troy School District, our Teaching and Learning, the work of the Teaching and Learning Department. The work of our Teaching and Learning Department really has never been stronger, and Ms. Sendler, thank you for, for mentioning that, the idea of coherence, because it is really through the work of, of Natalie and the team that, that has come together, our building-level administrators, our staff, who have come together to assure that every student across our school district is met with rigorous expectations on a daily basis, with research-based curriculum, and opportunities to excel. We meet students where they are, and we take them from where they are to great heights. That is something that we will continue to focus on across the Troy School District. So as you all, as you all go into the summer break, our students and staff, we wish you the very best. We look forward to seeing you back in August.
So I am not going to repeat what all my colleagues and Dr. Macheski have done so well, other than I have to say again, thank you, Natalie. You are going to be missed, and you have made such a, such a wonderful contribution to the district. Because I'm the board rep to the Troy Foundation for Educational Excellence, I just do want to say that they hosted a very successful golf outing. Don't know what the final tally is of the amount of money raised, but that money is money that goes right back into the classroom. So it gives opportunities for teachers and students to fund projects that are above and beyond. So I really want to do a shout-out to the leadership of the T F E E and Mrs. Holmes, who always does so much to support. She's the best ticket seller, when all of a sudden, they probably, they probably raise more money out of silent auction tickets, tickets and stuff like that than they actually do for the outing. We are, even though we are on, you know, kind of a summer, I guess I can't say break, because as a board, we are legally required, we have to meet monthly to still conduct business. We have a little bit of business that we have to conduct in July. We are going, so we are going to hold, we will not be holding workshops in July and August, but we'll be hosting regular board meetings. So our July 15 board meeting is actually going to take place in the morning. It will be a very, we have a very light agenda, some business and contracts that we have to approve, so that is going to take place at 9:30 a.m. here on July 15. Then we resume, I think our next meeting is August, I want to say 18th or 19th?
Nineteenth.
Whatever, the Tuesday. So that'll be the Tuesday, you know, our normal Tuesday evening schedule. Then we start back in September with workshops and board meetings.
... service, or at our central office for the July meeting.
Okay, so the July 15, we will not be here, we will be at central office, okay? So with that, if there is no further business, we are going to adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Again, congratulations to our new administrators, and have a wonderful summer. Again, congratulations to our new administrators, and have a wonderful summer.